Hot and ready to go. We are going to start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. And Lorenzo Hatch, I believe, is here once again to lead us in the chaplain prayer and pledges. And Lorenzo, I also want to thank you once again for holding the blue mask Thursday night in honor of the first responders. It was such a great event, and I'm excited to hear that you will do this on a regular basis. So, thank you very much.
Please bow your heads with me. Dear wise and loving Father, let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of San Angelo. And finally, Father, please bless and protect our public servants, especially of the fire and police departments. Police department. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. And if you'll please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one individual with liberty and justice for all.
Congratulations to thee, Texas. Our first proclamation today is for Older Americans Month, and I'm sure we have some folks in the audience to help us celebrate this event. Just you today. You never come here by yourself.
I know.
The Concho Valley includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. Communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. The Concho Valley Council of Governments recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and support older Americans need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. The Concho Valley can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, and increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in their communities.
Just, um, these older Americans are an integral part of our community, and I think we all know that. And so, as we go before, just as citizens, just give them a pat on the back, give them a smile, and know that they led this way for us. And so, thank you for all that they do.
Mental Health Awareness Month. Who do we have here today? Good. Yeah, a lot of weight on these shoulders. Mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. All Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. Prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. There's a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. Mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. With early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2022 Mental Health Awareness Month, and call upon City of San Angelo residents to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. We thank you for your support for MHMR, My Health, My Resources, what we're trying to call it now. Last year, we served over 4,200 people in adult and children's mental health services. That numbers continue to rise, but we are trying to meet the needs of the community as best we can, and partnering with the city, with other organizations. We recently have become a certified community behavioral health clinic. And what does that mean? We've now integrated primary care, mental health, and substance use services together in one area, and became a health home for others with doing care coordination. We're doing a whole lot of new things, trying to meet the needs of the community. And one of those is, of course, y'all know, the San Angelo Clubhouse, and I have quite a few members here. And I'm going to let maybe Amy talk a little bit.
So, yeah, so for those of you who don't know, the San Angelo Clubhouse is a program of MHMRs. We're a nonprofit organization that works with people who live with mental illness. We provide a community for people who are working toward recovery from illnesses like severe anxiety, depression, bipolar, schizophrenia, PTSD, and offer them a place to come that we like to say is bigger than their house, a place for them to come and be part of something that they can work toward and become back and get back into the workforce, back into the community, and make our San Angelo a better place.
The San Angelo Area Foundation enters its 20th year of working side by side with compassionate donors, serving as a community convener.
Convener.
Convener. Thank you so much. And, no, we won't ask what that is. Assisting nonprofits and community partners to inspire ideas and ignite action. An initial grant from the San Angelo Health Foundation and a collaborative vision of community leaders, the San Angelo Area Foundation has positively affected our community. Engaging donors and working towards a thriving community, the San Angelo Area Foundation manages over 400 funds, has received over $240 million in contributions, and has granted more than $130 million to many great philanthropies.
It's one of those days.
You say it all the time, don't you?
Yeah. And that is in the Concho Valley. Through the vision of passionate donors and organizations, the San Angelo Area Foundation is investing in youth education through scholarships, recognizing students for their academic accomplishments. More than $13.5 million has been awarded to over 5,000 area students through the San Angelo Area Foundation Scholarship Program, helping to create a brighter future for area youth. The San Angelo Area Foundation is the power behind San Angelo Gives. Donors from all corners of the region have generously given, pumping over $18 million of charitable dollars into our community to support local charities responding to critical needs and providing needed services. San Angelo Gives enters our neighbors' hearts, unites donors, and empowers these local organizations to continue doing work that helps our community thrive. The San Angelo Area Foundation is deeply rooted in the Concho Valley and continues to work with donors from all walks of life, representing diverse interests, passions, and reasons for giving. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 16 through June 16, 2022, as the San Angelo Area Foundation's Building a Legacy of Philanthropy Month. As the San Angelo Area Foundation celebrates its 20th year, the City of San Angelo is thankful for the positive impact created by donors' charitable visions and the continued commitment of the San Angelo Area Foundation to improve the quality of our life and our community. We hope you will continue to work with the San Angelo Area Foundation in building a legacy of philanthropy. Would you like to speak? I got it right twice. Two out of three times is pretty good. Who would like to take this?
I'll take this and I can talk, please.
Thank you, Mayor, very much, and Council. Thank you all very much in our community. It's hard to believe we started this 20 years ago. Mayor Gunter is one of our past board members of the foundation, and we're very thankful to your contribution to the foundation. I know you contribute a lot to our community, but it's hard to believe 20 years ago that the San Angelo Area Foundation was started. And you heard the numbers recited. It's an incredible amount of generosity that exists in our community, and we are most humbled to have this job of stewardship of these charitable dollars. And we're excited to celebrate 20, look forward for the next 20 years.
Thank you. Janet, would you like to offer anything?
Put me on the spot. Wow. I'll echo what Matt said. You know, one of the, we just wrapped up San Angelo Gives. I'll kind of talk about that. That's our most recent venture that we've had. San Angelo Gives for 2022, our community helped raise over $4.1 million in 24 hours for over 229 organizations across the Concho Valley. And so, we could not do what we do. We're very fortunate in being in our positions to help carry out the wishes of these generous donors who are in our community, and we get to be that vehicle for philanthropy and helping to improve the life of our community, so.
Mayor, we had to fight Tom off. He's getting ready to stage a coup.
I was just going to go.
Sorry, allergies are so bad, and those allergy pills draw your mouth out, and I can't, maybe that's a good thing. It could be. Did I hear that? Okay, quiet, quiet on this.
I'll see it.
All right, we will now move into public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address, or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and offer public comment?
Council, I'm Mayor. I'm Brian Angle. I'm single-member District 5, but my concern is, has to do with the, some conditions at the airport. Multiple of the privately-owned hangars, which are, the land is owned by the city and leased from the city, the hangars themselves are owned by individuals, but the surrounding property is owned by the city, meaning the tarmac and the ramp areas that are near these hangars. Several of them, Precision Lang Helicopters and the single-row T-hangers, as well as the grouping of T-hangers that are near Ranger. The asphalt and the tarmac in those areas has started to fall into disrepair. Particularly further south, you go near Precision and Lang Helicopters, it's to the point where several of the members have tried to seal it and repair some of the cracks themselves, but we are continuing to have difficulties with uneven pavement and uneven asphalt, and taxiing aircraft and foreign object damage is a distinct possibility, just because of the loose rock and all that that is on those areas. And I wanted to bring those areas to the attention to the City Council. My intention is eventually to go to the Air Force Advisory Committee, but I think the, and the Air Force, and the Airport Manager as well. But the city in the past has previously asked for those repairs to be done in the budget when the FAA did repairs at the airport. And this was last done in 2000. So, the asphalt has really gone into disrepair, and the reason, the further south you go, is because there's more sunlight, and the heat actually causes disruption of the asphalt. And the other thing is, with the recent storm, there's been some difficulties with power lines and stuff like that over the multiple T-hangers near Ranger Aviation. We actually have power lines that are laying across the top of several of the hangars, which are obviously a safety hazard and a fire hazard out at the airport. It's something that probably needs to be addressed pretty quickly, as well as several of the hangar doors are now non-functional because of the wind knocking them off their rails. So, I just wanted to bring that to the attention, and we want to, I want to continue to work with the Airport Manager and the Airport Advisory Council to try to get these things resolved pretty quickly.
Mayor, if I may, I have had conversations with Jeremy. I know we are going to be doing some things out at the airport later this year, and I'm thinking some of those may be addressed, but I will connect with Jeremy and Mr. Angle and to address his concerns.
Well, I think we can have Jeremy come at the next City Council meeting and present the game plan, so that everyone's informed in terms of what is going on. So, thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will close the portion of the agenda of public comment, and we will move into our consent agenda. I will ask if Council wants to pull any items from the consent agenda. I'll start with Karen.
No, ma'am.
Lucy.
No, ma'am.
Harry.
Tom.
No, ma'am.
Tommy.
No, ma'am.
I'm going to pull Item B. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda with the exception of Item B. May I have that motion?
I'll move.
So, moved by Tommy, seconded by Lucy. Any public comment concerning that item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Larry, did you vote aye? Yes, he said yes. Okay, so, motion passes 7-0. Well, he's on the camera, so he counts, right?
I know, I'm sorry.
All right, Item B, consider authori-
There he is.
Yeah.
Item B, consider authorizing the Assistant City Manager to negotiate and execute an amended contract and all related documents with the Railway Museum of San Angelo in order to allow the city to participate in funding strategies for capital improvements to the property. I want to talk to this because of the following. Suzanne Valenzuela and Monica Ramos came forward and made a presentation to me, which was a really well-done presentation. The big issue is, our contract with them does not allow for a council to fund that organization. That was part of our contract. On the other hand, they have gone out for grants and received grants to repair, I mean, to put in new windows, to put in a new HVAC system. And we're told a couple months ago that they're going to have to put in a new elevator within the next couple years, which will be about a, what's that number, Susanna? $50,000 to $90,000. Now, with all the events that they're putting on, they need the income from those events to pay for their operating expenses. So, they don't have the ability to raise the money to even match, to apply for more grants if they need to, to get the elevator paid for. So, this is a change allowing for the city to participate, to come up with the money necessary as a grant, for the grant, so they can apply. And that's really as simple as it gets. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. We're excited at the work and progress that has been made at the Railway Museum, and if, in fact, they have to replace that elevator in two years, obviously, we need to make sure we're working with them to get that done. With that, may I have a motion for approval?
So, moved by Harry?
Seconded by Lucy. Any public comment?
Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Larry. So, that passes 7-0. We will now move into the regular agenda. In that regular agenda, comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A, which will take your breath away, consider approving an agreement under Buy Board Contract Number 635-21 with Institute Form Technologies LLC for the A&amp;M Waterline Pipe Bursting Project in the amount of $4,787,318.50, and authorizing the City Manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Andy, would you like to come forward, please?
Morning, Mayor. Morning, Council. Andy Vasilio, Assistant Director of Water Utilities, and Mary did a very good job reading that. The company's name is Institute Form, and before we start, we have done work with them before. They've done a couple sewer projects. They were also sub on a sewer project using CIPP, the liner on the sewer. This is a little different technology than what they've done for us in the past, but it's a really good technology. It's a proven technology, and this is a great project to use for that technology. So, here's the section of A&amp;M that will be replacing the water line. It's from Avenue End to Johnson Streets, approximately two miles in length. And I will tell you, our folks in Water Distribution are tired of repairing leaks and breaks on this section of line. It's old cast iron, succeeded its useful life, and it's in time of repair. So, we're looking at using the pipe bursting method. And the reason we're doing that, and I'm going to get into some of the benefits of it, is a lot of our water line improvement projects, there's sewer, there's stormwater, there's road needs as well, but they don't have the priority that water line does for this project. So, that's why we're looking at this technology. So, here's a graphic, and just to briefly explain the technology. They have rods or chains that they would slide through the existing pipe. Then, on the backside, they'd have, they call a bursting head or an expander, and then they attach the new pipe on the backside of it. And then, they basically pull that expander or the bursting head through the existing pipe, displacing the existing pipe and pushing it into the ground. And then, a new pipe comes behind it and fills that void where the old pipe was. So, we're replacing, using this method, about two miles of old cast iron pipe with new PVC pipe. The bore lengths are usually three to 500 foot. They were explained to me, it's probably about 25 to 30 pulls for that two-mile stretch. We're going to be looking at replacing it with 12-inch. Currently, it's either 12-inch with a small section of 8-inch. So, we're same size or improving the diameter and capacity for part of the project. So, here's some of the benefits. First of all, it is a shorter construction time. Visiting with the folks from Institute Form, they believe that they can have this project done by the end of this calendar year, provided the materials are in. They have to have valves, fire hydrants. The pipe shouldn't be a problem because a section of their company actually produces a pipe underground solutions, but with the supply chain issues that we're all very familiar with, we have to at least give them an appropriate contract length. But it is a shorter time length than the traditional digway berry. Additionally, when you do the digway berry, you're laying a trench the whole length of the project. Here, they only have to come up and have to excavate wherever their service is, wherever they're doing their bores, you know, valves, fire hydrants, things of that. So, it's going to have a much less impact on the roads and on traffic flow. And it is a cost-effective solution as well.
How about, will any customer be without water at any time period during this construction?
Mayor, that's a great segue into where I was going next. And so, they will be actually laying temporary lines on top of the ground before they do these bores, before they burst that pipe, and they'll be putting temporary service lines to that temporary line, and then, when they put the new line service, they'll switch it back. So, there'll be some interruptions in services, but it'll happen twice, when they tie into the temporary line, and then, when they put it back to permanent, but it's going to be a much shorter duration than it would be under the traditional digway berry. So, that's a great benefit to this project. In addition, I mentioned before, it's a smaller footprint. We're not disturbing the road as much, so it'll be a less impact on traffic. There is one school there, Holy Angels. They've told me that they're going to try and start late July or August and try and get that section done first to minimize the impact on the school. And as I mentioned, you know, minimal interruptions to the water service.
May I ask, Karen, would you like to speak? For a more detailed definition of temporary disruption?
Temporary.
Temporary disruption for the customer.
Well, if you're familiar with the traditional big light berry, you know, they have the trenches, and so, it'll just be spots and sections along the way. So, I guess it's kind of hard for me to find. It'll be an excavation site as opposed to a lengthy trench for the full length of the project.
I think that we understand that, but per the mayor's initial question directed to you, I'm trying to determine whether or not a customer is actually without water, and if so, for how long.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. There will be, but it'll be probably, I would guess, two to four-hour range, and that's only to switch the services over.
We would notify, we will notify those customers ahead of time that the work is going on, and they could have a possible lack of water for a small period of time. Correct.
There will be door hangers, as well as we'll be working with Communications Department here in the city to make sure, use the appropriate media, social media, to keep citizens informed.
Well, two things. One, many customers enter through their garage, and they never open that front door. So, let's make sure that if we see the door hanger there for a long period of time, it means someone hasn't read it, and not everybody really tunes into social media. So, we just need to make sure it's an effective communication plan.
So, I just want to make a comment. So, for two miles, it's over $4 million.
$4.7 million.
$4.7 million.
That is correct.
That reminds me, Lucy, of Bell Street. We spent more under the pavement than we did on the pavement, so.
Yeah, and I think the unfortunate situation is, that's the current bidding climate that we're in. You know, the economic scale has changed than it was three years ago. And so, we feel with the proposal provided, the method of construction, with where we're at and our needs, and we have the capital funds available, that it is a good opportunity to move forward with that. And yes, we do, ma'am, understand that the price tag is high.
Well, the reason I said that was because I want the taxpayers to know exactly how much it costs, you know, that it's very expensive.
Yes.
We need to get rid of cast iron. I mean, and the number of breaks here on this section's tremendous. So, we've got to swallow the pill of 4.7. the pill of 4.7 million.
Mayor, I wholeheartedly agree with your comment about removing cast iron. Just in the three years I've been here as Assistant Director, I've had a number of phone calls and field meetings because of the condition of cast iron. Most of our cast iron's been in the ground for decades. It corrodes. It's just problematic and it succeeded its useful life. So it served us well, now's the time to upgrade.
Do I have further questions, Tom?
So would you say this is maybe a trial run of things we might do a lot more in the future?
If it's successful, then I would say yes, sir. We would definitely look at that.
Let's not say if, let's say. This will prove. $7 million, it better be successful. This will prove to be a successful strategy for future repairs and development.
When, Mayor, when?
As it is so successful, okay.
Well, and the comfort that I have is we've worked with this company before and they've done a good job. We've been, we've been pleased with them in the past. And so, to us as staff, that gives us comfort, that they know what they're doing, they've gone through it before and they've been successful in San Angelo and that's important to us.
So, this is going to have multiple taps in it. As they pull through, they're going to have to go back in and tap everybody. I mean, does the connection carry the same integrity as the pipe we're putting in? I would hope that that is thought about as we go through and tap everybody in.
Yes, so we won't be replacing the whole service line, but for that section of service line, from where we make the temporary tap back to the main, it will be replaced.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thanks, Andy.
Are there questions or comments for Andy? Okay, continue. Are you through?
At this point, staff is ready to recommend.
All right, so.
And this is, and just so you know, the procurement method is through buy board, which is a bidding process.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Move.
So moved by Harry, seconded by Tommy. Public comment, please?
Ryan Angle, Single Member District 5. This exact process as they did in Santa Fe because they're really into not disrupting the natural flow of things, very, very successful in that, in that environment. So I suspect it'll be very successful as well.
Thank you. All right, any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 No nays, so motion passes 7-0. We will move on to item B. First reading of public hearing of an amendment to Chapter 12, Planning and Development, Exhibit A, Zoning Ordinance Creating a New Section 205 Site Plan Review, which codifies, codifies the site plan review process to ensure compliance with recent changes in state law. John?
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. So as you mentioned, this does a couple of things. First of all, it establishes a process for site plan review. That's always been done through the building permit process, but there's been no delineation of how that process actually works. It's just, we do it the way we've always done it. And so this actually puts that process into the ordinance.
What's the difference between the site and the building permit process?
Well, so, in the old days, it was all done as one.
Old days, meaning just yesterday?
Well, we've actually changed part of this process over the last couple of years, but this is putting the actual process into the ordinance. And so, what the site plan is, it's the document that's basically a map of the property showing where all the buildings and parking and landscaping and all of that is going to be on the site, separate from the building plans, which are the architectural plans of how the building is actually constructed. What we used to do is require all that to be submitted at once. And the problem with that is, if the site plan results in you having to move the building, then you might be redesigning parts of the building that you've already designed. So this lets you do the site planning first, get that approved, and then do the building plans separate. Now, you can still do them all at once and some builders and developers do that. It doesn't prevent you from submitting it all at once if you've got it done, but it gives that additional flexibility for the developer to do those processes separately if they want to do that. We've changed some things in our ordinance to be in compliance with some changes in state law in terms of timing. The state has shortened the timelines, so as you may know, for a plat, for example, a subdivision plat, those have to be approved within 30 days by state law. Recent change in the last session made site plans consistent with that as well. So those have to be reviewed and approved within 30 days. Of course, as you'll see, our process takes, our goal is for 10 days and we actually exceed that in most cases. Another major thing that this does is it splits major site plans from minor site plans. Right now, if you bring in a site plan, you basically have to comply with all of our ordinances. What this does is says if you're making minor changes to your site, you only have to come into compliance for those things that you're changing. So if you're putting in a new driveway, that driveway has to be compliant, but your parking doesn't have to be compliant or other things on the site that you're not touching. So it splits that and allows this minor site plan process that we don't currently have. It also, again, establishes standards consistent with that state statute, which says that all applications must be either approved, approved with conditions, or denied. And if you approve it with conditions or you deny it, you have to give written reasons to the applicant what the conditions are or why it was denied with specific links to the sections of your code or state law on why those were conditioned or denied. That's something we've been doing for years, but this just writes that into our code to ensure that we're compliant with that state law. And as I already mentioned, it does require action within 30 days, but again, our standard process is 10 days. Our average over 2021 was six days. So we're well within the 30 days and we really always have been. I kind of explained this already, but the major site plan is for new construction or major expansions on a site. Single-family and two-family residential are exempted from this process. They have their own process through the building code. And so this really only applies to commercial, industrial, multifamily apartment kinds of development. And then, as I mentioned, a minor site plan allows you to not have to meet all of the code requirements, but only those things that you're affecting. And it's limited to these circumstances. If you're not changing the use, you're not doing anything that would increase traffic, your expansion is less than 50% or no more than 5,000 square feet of impervious, basically if you're not adding space. That's also the same trigger for a drainage plan. So if you're adding more than 5,000 square feet of coverage, whether that's pavement or building, then you have, that puts you into a higher category and you have to do a drainage plan. It would also require this full site plan.
They don't have to choose between.
It does change some of the approval process. We have recently switched to a digital process. And so now, those can be reviewed and approved digitally as well as stamped. So we no longer have to have a physical copy of the site, of the site plan that's signed by planning and the engineer, but it can be stamped digitally within our software. A site plan will be valid for 18 months, but it can be extended an additional 18 months. So a common thing we see is somebody turns in a site plan, but they might not actually be ready to build the building for another six months or nine months. And so, once they get the building permit and start that process, it automatically extends the site plan an additional 18 months from that point so that they don't have to go through an extension process like they would under our current ordinance. This has been reviewed from the Development Task Force. They are completely supportive of this. We did go through this with them a couple of meetings and they suggested changes to us. So this does reflect the changes that have been recommended by the development community. Staff is recommending approval and this went to the Planning Commission in March and they also recommended approval unanimously. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Council? Okay, then may I have a motion for approval?
Please approve.
A motion by Tommy, seconded by Lucy. And any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
With none objecting, it will be 7-0. Item C, First Reading and Public Hearing of Ordinances on the Following Cases for Property Being Point 322 Acres Located at 3202 and 3206 Abilene Street. One, The CP22-03, A Request for Approval of an Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Changing the Future Land Use from Neighborhood Center to Residential. And Two, Z22-09, A Request for Approval of a Rezoning from the General Commercial to the Single Family Residential Zoning District. John, you're on.
Thank you. This is just a rezoning of two lots. You can see here, most of this area, as you'll see on the next map, actually is residential and most of the frontage up here on Houston Hart is commercial. A few years ago, this was rezoned, those, part of that area from residential to commercial. They've not been successful with commercial development on that property, so now they're rezoning it back to residential, or that's the request. You can see here, the line used to be here and everything north of that was residential. That was changed, as I mentioned. They're just basically wanting to change that back for residential development.
Tom, do you have questions?
Needs to happen.
Pictures, staff does recommend approval. The Planning Commission also recommended approval unanimously.
Any questions or comments from Council? Tom, do you want to make a motion for approval?
Motion moved for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Karen. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. That completes our regular agenda. We will move into closed session, which there is none. Item Eight is follow-up and administrative issues. A, Consider Items Discussion, Executive Session, there was none. Item B, Consideration of Approving Various Board Nominations. Concho River Water Master Advisory Committee, Council Members Tom Thompson and Tommy Hebert, Mayor Brenda Gunter, Daniel Valenzuela, City Manager, Allison Strube, Water Utilities Director, and Scott McWilliams, Upper Colorado River Authority, all to terms ending August 2024. Two, Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Laura Beth Calvert, Mayor, to a first term ending February 2024. Design and Historic Review Commission, Stacy Elkins, SMD III, to an unexpired term ending September 2022. And Economic Development Corporation, Farah Gomez, SMDC, to an unexpired term ending February 2023. May I have a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Lucy made a motion to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. May I have a motion for adjournment?
Moved.
So moved by Tommy, seconded by Tom. Any public comment concerning adjournment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We are officially adjourned at 9:14 a.m.
Wow.
Great.